I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council order for June 24, 2025. This meeting can be viewed live on Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at www.youtube.com/atNorthAdams. Just click on the live, then on the 2025.06.24 city council meeting. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer.
Here.
Bona.
Here.
Breen.
Here.
Here.
Morrow.
Abstain.
Here.
Shade is absent. Wilkinson.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
We have seven present.
Seven members present, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silence. Tonight, we remember Michael Breen, our councillor Breen's older brother. He was involved in Breen's flower and gift shop in the concourse here in North Adams, and he was also involved in many civic activities, and he was a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the April 8, 2025 city council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Council City Council meeting minutes for April 22, 2025. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Opposed.
Did we have two abstains?
Yeah.
I abstained because I was absent from the meeting.
Okay. Hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you reach your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended, and as a courtesy, I ask of all parties, please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody that wishes to speak for, open for hearing visitors, please step up to the mic, name an address for the record.
Michael Malazo, 91 Wheeler Ave, Clarksburg, Massachusetts. I'd like to draw all of your attention to the fact that the airport has been noncompliant probably for three or four years now. You're still noncompliant. You're going to have in front of you some grant assurances. The mayor's letter states right here that these grant assurances is what it's been, is normal course of business, and she's also saying that you're guaranteeing these conditions will be met for 20 years, the entirety of the duration of this contract. You're out of compliance on D2A, D2H, E1, E3A, E4A, G2, H6, and K2. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about these. I am unclear that the grant assurance paperwork came to you guys with no signature that I can see from the airport commission. You don't have a commission, you have no manager. The city is managing the airport, which they're not allowed to do, and in general, whoever's going to sign this document guaranteeing these things, I think, is probably knowingly committing fraud when you know you're out of compliance. So whoever actually has to put their signature on that, if I was them, I'd think twice about it.
Thank you. Anybody else for hearing the visitors?
I'm from June real, 36 Holden Street, and I wanted to talk about the ADU ordinance. So, the city has a deficit of 802 units of housing, 130 units of short-term rentals. That represents 16% of our housing deficit. We have renters households, 2,697. We have 5,232 residents who are renters. Forty-two percent of the population of North Adams are renters. Fifty-seven percent of renters are spending more than 30% of their income on their rent. That is 2,982 people in our city. The increase in the percentage of cost-burdened renters in the four years between 2019 and 2023, when we have data, is 14%. 14% more people are cost-burdened now, and probably higher than were at that point in time. So I ask you, why do we need short-term rentals when we have a rental housing crisis affecting thousands of people in our city? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for hearing the visitors? Okay. Council paper number 12,471, An Ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams. Appendix Z, zoning regarding the addition of accessory dwelling units, ADUs, passed to a second reading and published as required by law on May 30, 2025, postponed at the meeting of June 10, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Council Blackmer.
Just a reminder, this is a ordinance change, so it's going to need, this zoning change, it's going to need a supermajority of six, correct?
I can't hear her.
We're going to need a supermajority of six.
We're going to need a supermajority because it's a zoning change?
For two-thirds?
Yeah, we're going to need six instead of five? Is that correct?
I believe so.
We may.
Yeah. Okay. Council Bona?
Yes, that being said, obviously, we need six to, all of us, to support it. I believe the ordinance that's currently in front of us does not allow them to be STRs. I know that has been the question. I have spoken to probably a couple dozen people out there, some that I believe are, you know, supporting and pushing for additional affordable housing, and then others that just feel like they could have an unbiased decision. I do know we were approached, I don't know if all of us were, but of a developer that, that over at the tourist, and what they want to develop are these small houses, which, if I can through the chair, maybe Mr. Maranti can help just clarify that, is that their new project includes, in quotes, I'm going to say, ADUs, and they feel by eliminating the STRs, that could hamper what they want to do over there. That's their opinion. I don't know if they can alter it where they are not ADUs, and it can still consider with their plan, but that's a commercial project, the way I look at it. They know they're going to sell the properties as houses, but I think they're going to market them, that people can buy them and then make them STRs. I've looked up across the state, the communities are pretty split, and ones are allowing them to be STRs and not. What's interesting, the ones that are not are communities that are already like very high level of tourism, like Salem. Salem, part of it is, some of these communities have stopped and kept their STRs altogether. So that's, that's one of the reasons. But a lot of communities, including Pitts Field, have allowed them to be STRs. I tried to look up and see what the pros and cons, and why the communities have voted against it or supported it. One uses the example that, let's say, younger couples, if they can build or turn something, part of the house into an ADU, then they can get extra income that will actually help them buy that house that they may not have been without that extra income. I know Mr. Maranti has talked about in the past of even capping, considering capping our STRs in general, but then there's also the discussion that we're seeing, the STR numbers sort of falling off, that they're, they've already sort of peaked, and they're not doing what they're doing, and people are starting to turn their STRs into long-term housing. Probably one thing I would agree, well, I'm not saying I disagreed with anything, but the Mr. Maranti said at the last meeting, is that this probably won't have a big effect either way, that there's probably not going to be a whole lot, because there are a lot of rules and specifications that are attached to this that don't make it work for a lot of people. But what are the odds of someone spending 100, 200,000 to put an ADU in the back of the yard to be affordable housing? But I could see that be the case if it's more like an in-law, an in-law guest house. So their mother, father, who wants to downsize, have a smaller unit and live close to the family. So that I do, I see that more happening. So I guess where I'm going with this is I'm still split, I really am. I don't like the idea of governments creating restrictions. I do feel like if anyone was going to build an ADU in the back of the yard to be an STR, they're not going to, to do it as an affordable housing, and I do feel that if someone is going to build an ADU to be affordable housing, then that's what they're going to keep it. So I don't think it's going to change anybody's opinion on what they may or may want to do. So obviously, one positive is if there's ADUs being built for either reason, it does help us with our tax rule. These are taxable properties. So I, for literally a month, I've been like just teetering right on the edge. Right now, what's in front of us, I believe, if I'm correct, does not include these being STRs. Is that correct? Is that, yes, right. And I know councillor Blackmer from the beginning has sort of disagreed with that, and she's been vocal, saying it doesn't make sense if the house can be an STR, but then the people can go out and live in the ADU, so it's really not accomplishing anything. At this point, I feel I would be fine with them being an STR, and I'd be fine with them not, but I would probably be leaning towards if the majority of this council felt these should be allowed STRs, I would be okay with that. Through the chair, though, I'd like to ask Mr. Maranti, and I know you don't know maybe their project specifics, but with the tourist project that they are currently doing, I know that project has changed, but how are those considered ADUs versus just small houses they can sell?
First, let me say that I'm not really comfortable discussing one particular business in town, but in general, I would say that if they're on wheels, they're built to a standard of an RV. They're not your typical housing. They don't meet necessarily, they don't meet at all the building code in many ways. So they wouldn't be allowed anywhere in the city except for an affordable housing, which is our mobile home parks or the campground where we have RVs. So to me, unless they're modified and they're put on a foundation or on a permanent, the wheels are, come off and they're, you know, set up in a different way, it's sort of a moot point. It wouldn't be allowed anyway.
It wouldn't be, through the chair, so what you know as the current plan, those are not, those wouldn't even be acceptable as ADUs?
I'm not sure what the real current plan is, but no, they wouldn't, because they'd be set in zones that wouldn't allow them to be set as an RV in your, those zones. However, could they be modified?
Yeah, so for the whole city, RVs or any small home on wheels are not, cannot be our ADUs under this rule?
Yeah, that's not truly what this is about. It's about housing.
Yeah.
And again, back to that subject of whether it's short-term rental or not, I think everybody knows my feeling on it. It doesn't solve that housing problem that we heard earlier. It's another vacation rental. It's a, it's a hospitality room. That's not fixing housing for anyone, so.
Okay, council Blackmer.
I looked up the zoning law as far as voting. Normally, zoning is a supermajority. They, unfortunately, it was an AI response, which I don't always trust, because it says that it specifically only needs a majority, but because it's AI, I don't know, and I can't find it in the law, and I didn't know if you guys had an answer on that.
My cheat sheet says two-thirds.
For normal zoning, but what about under, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, what I'm reading is as part of this housing ADU law that the state did, they subjected housing votes to different, less restrictive votes. But again, it's AI, and I didn't know if, if Ms. Ead had anything on it. All I've got is an opinion of lawyers, not an actual, I can't find the chapters actually.
Yeah. My cheat sheet from the city clerk's office says two-thirds vote on salaries and zoning ordinances. That's all it says.
It all, and it's, when was that updated? Does it revolve around the law? I mean, unfortunately, it's an AI thing, and I don't trust AI, but it says key changes. Voting requirements, a supermajority, two-thirds vote is no longer needed for many zoning changes related to housing. Simple majority votes are now sufficient for approving zoning changes that facilitate housing development and for granting special permits for multi, for certain multifamily. So, but we don't know. I, I just, I don't know if we should, I'd hate to vote with five and have it go through and then have it kicked back to us. Should we continue it, is my question.
Clerk is going to go into our office to check that real quick for us, to make sure.
I'll be right back.
She'll be right back.
Do you have a copy of the new housing law?
Do I what?
Have a copy of the new housing law?
No.
That's where it would be.
May I should table this?
My question is, should we postpone this yet again and get an answer on if we need a four or five vote? I'm sorry, a five or six?
I think that would be probably a good idea, yes.
I mean, I don't want to deny the five of you, if, if you can legally do that, I wouldn't, I don't want to go with six and say you legally could have voted, and I don't want to go with five and have us be wrong.
Okay.
Is my thought.
Councillor Bona?
Yeah, councillor and I have, I mean, I'd like to see the vote happen either way, because we postponed it last meeting, and who knows if the next meeting, you know, every time we're going to be missing two councillors, we have one that has to abstain, we're going to keep running into this until we have one additional councillor, and we can't predict who's going to show up at the next meeting, unless they can call in.
And I did hear from councillor Morrow at the last moment, so.
Could I clarify my point? My point isn't about having, how many people. My attitude was, we're going to vote, it doesn't matter, we can't keep continuing it. But because we don't know, we don't have an interpretation in front of us of the changes in the law, and I can't get a copy, I'm trying to find one on, on my Google, of whether it's a supermajority or not. That's why, that's the only reason I'm postponing, which suggests postponing it, is to actually get an opinion from the Attorney General's office.
Okay. Councillor Breen?
Along the lines of supermajority versus majority, if we vote today, we don't have a determination if it's passed or not passed. We don't have a, so that's up in the air. So you're asking us to vote on something we don't know what the consequences are, and that's not a good way to vote.
No, no, I agree. Councillor Wilkinson?
I agree 100%, because there's a question as to what we're doing here. I would end up voting no anyway, so if you need a supermajority, you're out. I'd rather have us postpone it, find out exactly what we're doing, so I could vote yes.
Okay. Councillor Bona?
I mean, I guess in most cases, I mean, would our vote change based off of knowing what the vote would do? So if you're in favor of it, or against it, let's say you're against it, and you feel like, well, I'm against it, but that's going to kill it, well, then I don't want it to die, so I'll support it. I mean, I guess then where's, where's your, where's, where's the vote if, if that's what's going to change your vote, based off if you feel it's going to die or not die? I guess I'm just curious, and not that you have to, but I just feel with other councillors, because I think the holdup here might be the STR, if other councillors have opinions on that specifically. I know where councillor Blackmer stands, and again, not that you have to answer it, but it just, I'm still like this, so.
Okay. Council Blackmer?
So my issue is, I'm going to vote no. If the rest of you vote yes, and we only need five, it passes. But we don't seem to have a straight answer on if it needs five or six.
We don't at this time.
Right, so if it needs five, you got it. If it needs six, you don't, and that makes it a weird, that's why I would continue it.
You would not need six, because when you're counting the votes, you go by the number of people, somebody abstaining there not counted. It's only the people who are here.
Even with zoning, even with supermajority of zoning?
It is only with the people that are here.
Then why is it in a small town, when they only have three board members, they have to have three to approve it?
Because they need to.
Even if there's only two showing up, when it comes to zoning, specifically zoning?
I do know that when, like if you call the state, they're going to say to talk to your solicitor, because we are a municipality. Because every time I call, they tell me to talk to the city solicitor.
And, and I understand that, but my point is that there's a difference between a majority of something on a parking ticket and zoning. Zoning, zoning ordinances and laws have different requirements, so I, I've seen, I mean, if you're in a small town, if you're in a town that has three select board members, you have to have all three vote in favor. If you only have two people present, it doesn't count, and it basically goes into all these other laws. So that, that, what you're saying doesn't make sense in the way that stuff works. That's why I think zoning is different, and we should get, again, somebody made a motion to approve. Okay, the mayor's trying to get an answer.
Mayor's trying to get an answer. Councillor Wilkinson?
Well, because of all the confusion, you can't take a vote on something you don't know what you're talking about, or you shouldn't. So if councillor Blackmer is unsure, she seems to be, I can tell you right now, so am I, so if you, right now, you only have five, because you've got two noes.
Yeah.
So you don't want this thing to die, we just want it to be clarified. So what is wrong after all this time to say, let's, let's get an answer to our question and put this to bed? I don't see any problem. Why does it need to be done right now?
Okay.
We can move to table.
Excuse me, the mayor's got an.
Mayor, I'm going to let the mayor speak.
I was able to get the city solicitor, and I'm happy to put him on speaker if you want to ask the question.
That would be great.
Yes, could you please, yes.
What do we have, Joel?
Joel.
Joel, it's Lisa Blackmer, your PIA. The question we have is, this is zone, normally an ordinance, it's two-thirds vote for zoning. So there's now, two questions have come up. One, the new housing law, and unfortunately, it was an AI answer, and I don't trust AI, says that there's changes in the, specifically in the ADU law, in housing law, that they put through this year, that changes the two-thirds threshold, supermajority threshold, for certain types of housing ordinances and zoning changes, which I can't clarify what that is, and that would change it to just a regular majority, which would be five. The other question that came up was the clerk asking about that it's, it's a majority of the members here and not a member of, and not the majority of the body, but I thought that zoning requirements were subjected to a majority of the body and not the members present, i.e. the small towns with three select board members have to have three votes to approve things.
So, one at a time, and you know, I'm, so on the ADU and a lot of housing-related zoning changes, they have been changing over three years now in different pieces, and the one thing I may want to take a minute to check is if they changed the composition.
Can the PD people hear that?
Quantum of vote, I'll explain this in a second. So the main point, though, absolutely right, whereas zoning changes have always required a two-thirds vote of, let's say, a city council now, or a town meeting, now it's a simple majority for certain kinds of housing-related zoning amendments, and accessory dwelling units are, qualify as one of those types of, of housing-related amendments that only require a majority vote. And the one, each, so I'm, I'll run through my, my response in its entirety, and what I might do then is, is hang up and research a certain question I'll get to at the end and then call the mayor back, but I'm pretty confident of all of what I'm saying. So part one is the quantum of vote being simple majority. So part two is, so there's a very old city of, city of Waltham, city council case, where they had, I believe at the time, an 11-member council, and only, I'm going to say, six or seven members showed up, in other words, at least six to have a quorum of the 11, and of those six or seven members, they did pass something by a simple majority vote, but it was well less than the six that they would normally require to have a majority of 11, and the court said that's fine, as long as you have a quorum, the quorum can vote, and whether it's a majority or two-thirds, they can vote, and the majority of that quorum is sufficient. So if you have five members of your nine members tonight, you've got a quorum of your 11 members, and so three of the five members are going to be sufficient to constitute a simple majority.
Can I follow up a question on that? Is that for any vote, or is that, but I thought, I thought zoning had a different rule.
So it doesn't, and so that's the one thing I'm going to have to look up, and that is, so there have been three or four, maybe even five rounds of changes, you know, the MPT zoning, for instance, being one, and ADUs being another, and several others. Zoning changes having to do with facilitating the creation of housing, particularly affordable housing, and I just want to make sure that none of those changes changed those rules that I've laid out, in other words, that it's simply a, that the vote need only be a simple majority of the quorum that shows up, that it doesn't have to be a majority of the full complement. And I'm quite certain that that did not change, but there have been a couple of more recent changes that are tangential, but have had some, some variance in some of these things. So I'd want to spend 10 minutes reviewing that, but I'm confident of the answer that I've laid out, but I'm just leaving you hanging a little bit, I'm sorry, with the caveat that I want to do the due diligence on some of the recent enactments.
Okay, thank you. That would be really helpful. I think what we're going to do is move on to the other agendas, agenda items, and come back to this one, so you can do your research and get back to the mayor.
I have one quick question. Attorney Bard, can you hear me? This is President Sapienza.
Yes.
We have a question, is can you ensure that a person that is abstaining does not count towards the quorum? Right now, we have one member, we have seven members out of our nine present, but one is abstaining. Does that person count towards the quorum or not?
Towards the majority.
No, you would not, but actually, it doesn't matter, because with six, I mean, of the people voting, you're going to need a majority, so in other words, the person abstaining doesn't count one way or the other.
Okay.
But since you have, you have six with, with the seventh person abstaining, you still have the quorum, I think that's part of your question, and then you will need a majority of those six.
Okay. Okay.
So you're coming, either way, you're gonna need four votes, right? Because whether you're, you have six people voting, or you have seven voting, you're still gonna need four yes votes.
We'll need, we'll need four, yes, right.
Right.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you, Attorney Bard, I appreciate your time, and we'll wait to hear from you.
So Joel, you'll give me a call back?
Yes, I will.
Okay, without objection, um, we're gonna postpone this to the end of the meeting, or if we do happen to hear from Attorney Bard before, we will sneak that in between items before we finish our business for tonight. Okay. Moving on to Council Paper Number 12,0487, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Appendix D, Section D-6, Police Department Fees and Fines for Parking Permits and Passes Passed to a Second Reading and Published as Required by Law on May 22, 2025, postponed for the meeting of June 10, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt, and second. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
No.
Breen?
No.
No.
Fitch?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Abstain. Abstain.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Four yeas.
That's two-thirds of six, we got it.
Yep, motion passes.
Chair?
Point of clarification.
Counselor?
Counselor Wilkinson wasn't here, and I could see he was questioning my abstention, but throughout this whole process, I have abstained, because I am a resident that lives on Main Street that does utilize the parking lot.
Understood.
Center Street.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, okay. Council Paper Number 12,0488, A Communication from Counselor Fitch Requesting a Discussion Regarding Sustainability Planning and Establishing a Sustainability Commission in North Adams, Referring to Community Development With a Return Date of June 24, 2025. Counselor Fitch, do you have an update?
Uh, yes, I do. I'm actually going to move to postpone this to the second meeting of July, that's July 22. Any chance I could get a second for that, and then I'll go into discussion?
Okay.
Thank you. We have scheduled a Community Development Committee meeting for July 9, and so I'd like to have that meeting before we vote on this, or before we, it comes back for another presentation. Just a quick overview of some, little bit of research that I did, and I wanted to really explain why I wanted to have this discussion, whether or not it results in us creating a sustainability commission. We have sprinkled throughout our Vision 2030 Plan eighteen mentions of sustainable, two mentions of sustainability, twenty mentions of climate, five mentions of climate change, one mention of carbon sequestration, and perhaps many more as well, but I just pulled a couple of quick examples, um, from page seventy-four, and their goal FH is to promote sustainable methods of food production and food waste management. From page seventy-five, support targeted business development and create new green jobs in food waste reduction and recycling promotional, promoting entrepreneurial opportunity in food waste reduction and recycling. Page eighty-four, eighty-two, build a resilient city by proactively working to set and advance climate change adaptation and mitigation best practice. Page 124, promote sustainable methods of food production and food waste management, and a couple other examples, my favorites, from page seventy-six, North Adams is in a position to adapt practices to further its fiscal and environmental sustainability. It is important for the City of North Adams to consider the impacts of climate change when planning new or enhancing existing infrastructure, and to plan city services to address predicted trends such as more high heat days. And so this is why I wanted to have this discussion, I wanted to make sure that our city was focusing on these issues and implementing these recommendations that are in our Vision 2030 Plan. And reminder, it's not important to me that we have a sustainability commission to do this, I just wanna make sure that we are focusing on this as a city. So again, we will have this discussion in a Community Development Committee meeting on the ninth of July.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion postponed to the second meeting in July, and we have had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Council Paper Number 12,0497, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Under Chapter Two, Sections Twenty-seven and Twenty-eight, With the Fiscal Year 2026 Classification Plan and Compensation Plan Scheduled B Passed to a Second Reading and Posted as a Municipal Bulletin on June 11, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Uh, yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,0271-2, Communication Number 115 from Mayor Maxi Presenting End-of-Year Appropriation from Certified Free Cash for Fiscal Year 2024. I'm gonna file this communication, and Mayor, would you like to take it?
Um, basically, this is a procedural thing that we do at the end of the year, usually it comes a little bit earlier, took us a little bit with our change of auditors and our financial system, um, so we are pleased to say in fiscal year 24, um, we were in the black, and we are gonna add to stabilization sixty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, we need a motion. No, not yet. Okay, yep, all right. Council Paper Number 12,0271-2, An Order Recommending the Appropriation of Funds in the Amount of Sixty-Six Thousand, Three Hundred and Sixty-Nine Dollars from Fiscal Year 24, Certified Free Cash to the Stabilization Account.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,502, Communication Number 116 from Mayor Maxi Presenting Zoning Ordinance Change Five-Dash-One Service District. I will file the communication without objection. Mayor, would you like to speak on this, please?
Yes, so I, um, this morning, or this afternoon, I presented all of you at your table with a chart that's, um, is the zoning chart, Appendix B, and basically, what we've discovered is that the S1 service district may have a minimum lot size error. It says that the, that district requires a minimum lot size of thirty-six hundred square feet. If we were, and to impose that limit is inconsistent with the intent of the zone. We discussed it internally, Mr. Maranti, the zoning officer, is here tonight, and we feel that it's just an error in the chart. As you can see on the chart, the other districts, um, B1, B2, and the Central District District, they're all none, they have no, um, minimum lot size. So with that, we are requesting that it be referred, um, to, uh, Planning Board, and this be fixed, so a project, i.e. the Notre Dame project, can continue.
Thank you. Council Paper Number 12,502, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter Z, Appendix B, Entitled Dimensional Regulation Schedule.
Move to, um, refer to the Planning Board to hold a joint public hearing?
Second.
Okay.
Between the City Council and the Planning Board.
Right, all right, we have a motion and a second to, uh, have a joint, uh, hearing with the, uh, with the Planning Board. Counsel Wilkinson?
Mr. Maranti, through the chair, Mr. Maranti, could remind us how an S1 zone is different from other zones?
It's that odd little area that I believe you used to conduct businesses, and up there around the library, so you have those first floors, you have those dentists, other businesses that are in those areas, and then multiple units above, and having that restriction would make nearly all of them noncompliant. Anything new that were to come in and wanting to have that business, and then multiple units, would be problematic, they wouldn't have the land area, given the neighborhood that that S1 zone is in. It's just, it grew there somehow over the years, and to continue and keep it there, it was an oversight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to refer to a joint meeting of the Planning Board and the City Council, and just a note that the, uh...
Public hearing.
Joint, I'm sorry, joint public hearing. The agenda for July 14th has already been set, so this will have to take, uh, place. They're willing to have a meeting, extra meeting prior to August 11th.
They are, or we are, I'm sorry?
They are.
They are.
If they are, yeah. If they are, yep. If they are willing, yep.
Oh, okay, you, you would have to reach out to the chair, but I think it's gonna be hard to get another meeting scheduled.
Right, yep. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Counsel, I'm sorry, President Sapienza, when you have a conversation, could you suggest that they have it, we have it at 6:30 on July 22nd, before our meeting, that we were already meeting?
I can suggest that, yes.
And if they can get a quorum?
Okay.
It, again, it's July, it'll be, might be hard, but we could try to do it then, unless they have another alternative, but that way, we're all committed.
Meeting on July 22nd at 6:30, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There should be plenty of time to go over it. I say 6:45, but that's pushing it.
Yeah, that, that would be a little bit, yeah, yeah, nope. I will suggest that. Okay. Moving on, Council Paper Number 12,503, Communication Number 117 from Mayor Maxi Presenting Airport Grant Assurance for Airport Surface Maintenance Program. I'm gonna file the communication, turn it over to the mayor.
So basically, this is another opportunity provided by Mass DOT that will a hundred percent fund improvements to our gates. We are in desperate need of repairing Gate Five, and also Gate One isn't functioning properly. So with that, despite what others say, this is standard language that has been provided us from Mass Aeronautics. If we were so corrupt and so off-kilter, they wouldn't continue to give us any more money. In fact, Mass Aeronautics was out last week and found that our airport had no areas of concern that would lead them to believe that we have any unsafe operations at the Hermann and West Airport. Our major problem at the airport is personalities, um, and we are continuing to operate as we can. We are down to two Airport Commission members, so therefore, yes, the city has had to step in, and yes, if we wanna continue to have the airport open, that's the way it is until we can find some new commissioners that aren't run out of the airport. So with that, I would respectfully request that this get approved, and we can get our gates fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me go into the, yeah. Or did you have a question for Mayor?
It was, yeah, through the chair, the mayor's. So is it acceptable with, currently with what we have for members, they understand the situation?
Yes, but we can't operate at the, in the moment, I can't have a meeting to hire an airport manager, I have to issue, and we're in the process of trying to get an RFP out the door for the restaurant. You know, everybody wants things over there, but they're not cooperative, certain populations of people.
But I, I guess where I'm going, though, is...
What Mass Aeronautics completely understands the situation, they know the history of the dynamics of personalities, and they know that we're doing everything that we can. They still feel that it is a safe airport, and, um, we're gonna continue to find volunteers, but who wants to volunteer for something like this when they get, you know, bashed every time they try to do something right?
Thank you.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Again, through the, the chair to the mayor. I believe it takes two signatures, does not? Doesn't the Airport Commissioner have to sign this as well as the council?
Yes, the Airport Chair, which we still have an Airport Chair, thank you.
You still have an Airport Chair? Who's the Airport Chair?
The Airport Chair is James Haskins, who is also playing the role of the interim Airport Manager.
Okay, and who is the other present member of the Airport Commission?
Mr. OP Grandchamp, Robert Grandchamp.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Blackmer, do you have a question?
Since we're asking questions on a communication, um, and this has nothing to do with Mr. Malazo's questions, I was looking at this yesterday and today, I've made some phone calls, I'm waiting to hear back, so, um, a couple of things. One, it says, Definitions Number Three, Airport Commission shall mean the North Adams Airport Commission, with members appointed by the City Council as appropriate pursuant to Section 51E of Chapter 90 of the general laws. In no way in here does it say, unless you have a form, a form of government, or you have a, uh, mayor appoints everybody, so I have an issue with that, because we haven't appointed any of them, uh, or maybe we signed off on Mr. Grandchamp a while ago.
And Mr. Haskins, I believe.
Uh, no, you took that one out.
No, that was Mr. Harris.
Oh, okay, oh, and so he left you, okay, so Mr. Haskins.
And we did get an opinion on that from the...
I know you did get an opinion, but I disagree, so, and let me please finish what I was saying. Thank you. Um, I also, you have at the top of the list, we have three openings, so we don't have, really don't have a quorum, we don't have an Airport Commission. Somebody can sign something, but I'm not sure how they can sign if they can't vote on it. I, I don't think that the Chair has these omnipowers, that they can do things without a vote of the actual commission, and we don't have a commission because we don't have enough members. So, also, what is the deadline that we have to have this done?
I believe it's by the end of this month.
Ju- June 30th, June 30th.
Yeah, they're starting work tomorrow.
They're starting work before we've actually signed this.
Mass DOT is ready to come out and get started.
Okay.
If you don't wanna sign it, we can send them away, and we can give the money back.
Well, I resent the fact that you, you need this done immediately, and you've got all of these problems that haven't been solved and have been a problem for the last year, and you're saying, oh, well, you have to sign it, or we don't get the money, and we have, what's today, the 23rd, we have seven days, not counting the weekend.
So Counsel Blackmer, with all due respect, I disrespect your tone, and I understand your concerns, and we have been working through those issues, and that is a standard document that is set. And you're right, it doesn't say Charter A, B, C, D, or what have you, but we've worked through that with Mass Aeronautics, and they have no issue with what we've done and what we're doing, and I totally agree with you, that it is coming in at the 11th hour, but that was when it was presented to me. So that's where we're at. The money came up, the money came in, the document gets on here.
Who's talking? I can't hear her.
All right, just a second, we have somebody on the cell phone?
Yeah, which Joel Bard.
Okay.
Well, somebody's talking in the background, and I can't hear you, no disrespect.
All right, let's, um, can we ask Kathy just to step out of the room while she's on conversation?
Yeah, we're just holding, we're just holding Attorney Bard, that's all.
Oh, okay, all right. Let's go to Counselor Breen.
If you, if you could, um, on a grant assurance, could you, could you read, uh, C to me? Under, under definitions, it's, it's A, B, and then C, could you read that paragraph?
Okay, I will read, uh, this is, uh, C, under definitions, this is duration. One, the terms and conditions of these grant assurances shall take full force and effect on the date the grant is executed by the Aeronautics Division, and shall remain in full force and effect for twenty years from the date of the receipt of the funds for this project by the Airport Commission, or from the Aeronautics Division, whichever occurs latter.
Okay, so, so what they're saying is from the date of the execution of the grant, would that be today? Would that be when they put the RFP out? What is the, the date for that?
Would be the day that we execute that document.
Okay, so...
The clock starts ticking.
Okay, so say it's today. Does that paragraph say that you have to have the insurance for twenty years?
I can't answer that, Mayor, 'cause that's something you can answer, or...
No, you just read it.
Yeah, I just... Yeah, I just read it, yeah.
Okay. I'll read it again, then. "And shall remain in full force and effect for 20 years." It's very clear.
Yeah.
Okay, very clear. So, whatever we decide, it's gotta be for 20 years. Also, when we signed papers last year, in the month of June, it was the same grant assurance paperwork. So last year, it was for 20 years also. So that's saying, you gotta do guarantees for 20-year period. If we go back to Counselor Blackmore, could you read number three, the definition?
I read it. On definitions A?
Yes.
"Airport commission," and I've already read it in quotes, "shall mean the North Adams Airport Commission, with members appointed by the city council as appropriate pursuant to Section 51E of Chapter 90 of the general laws."
Okay, so, so when we had the general government meeting, we were all the way down to duration, and the city solicitor said, "I have never heard of anything 20 years, let me check on it," is what the tape I looked at yesterday. So, we have one before us that's requiring 20 days. So unless we have that, we're out of compliance. And I'm looking at, in the last 25 years, we have spent $19 million. And if you go back to 2019, you have $3.3 million administration of the construction of the building. In 2020, it was the perimeter fence. Just like two weeks ago, when we didn't do the, the library, by the 30th, we had to give the money back. This is the same situation. Are we ready to give millions of dollars back because we're out of compliance? Because if you go back 19 years, we're talking $18 million. So yes, they do care, I have spoke with the FAA, we have to comply with the grant assurance. I'm not signing it, I'm voting on it, you're signing it. Right now, we are in compliance of Mr. Haskin, who was appointed by the, the city council, Mr. Grandchamp was appointed by the city council, Mr. Diamond, without what? Mr. Diamond was appointed by the mayor and stayed a couple of months and quit. Mr. Hen, Doug Hendrick did the same thing. So, the two, not all right, the two people that are out of compliance are gone. Right now, we can sign this, but when we go to add the three people, they have to be approved by the city council, or we're not in compliance with federal law. That's it.
Thank you. Counsel Blackmore?
Counsel, with all due respect to the mayor, my frustration was, you kept interrupting me, that's why I-
I apologize.
So, just, I hate to give away, I hate to not take money. I hate that we can't get this airport situation straightened out. I hate that we can't get members to serve who meet the requirements and wanna stay on board. I do know that there are personalities, obviously, we've heard from some of them, either via email, or in person, or in letters to the editor. So, I hate to turn money away, but I hate to, I guess it's, it's Counselor Sapienza that's gotta sign it, so I can vote for it, and he can sign it, and if there's a problem, then it'll come back on him.
If we're still in doubt, yes, Counsel Wilkinson?
This reminds me of something somewhat similar. Way back when, when I was first on city council, something was brought to us. If we don't spend the money by the end of the month, then we're going to lose it. Mayor Alton Bright was mayor at the time. The interesting part was, we spent the money, and guess what we got? We got all the pavers at Heritage State Park, and if that is the most ridiculous-looking project, I cringe every time I go there, and I go there often. So, we don't just need to spend the money or else we lose it, because sometimes, it's a bad thing.
Mayor?
So Counsel Blackmore, I apologize for getting snippy with you. And secondly, as you know, this airport commission and the airport situation has been nothing but a pain in my neck. And the one thing Mr. Malazo and I will probably agree on is, maybe we shouldn't own it, maybe we should sell it. But you know what? It's an asset to this community, believe it or not, we're going in the right direction. We just gotta get through some things. This is $22,000 to repair some gates. Let's get the gates fixed, and we can go over semantics, and we're submitting our you on. But I don't feel we're out of compliance. If we were continually out of compliance, Mass Aeronautics would have, would have discussed that with us. The FAA would have discussed that with us. But, here we are.
Counsel Breen?
You can talk to anybody you want. The paper says what the situation is. You can, anybody can say, "Well, I don't think so, you might not get that ticket." Well, the library, we lost $75,000 because we didn't abide by the rules. We weren't able to by June 30th, do the, the building, and the rule was, give back the $75,000. $75,000 could have been a cruiser, it could have been five years of part-time airport manager. I think this is ridiculous to debate this, because the first thing is, the airport, it, it's, it's ready to crash. The airport, we've had 3.6 moving a building that's been empty for six years. Now, we, we, we spent another million on a hangar that we got an RFP for a half a million dollars, and five jobs that paid $45 an hour, they were all set to do that in October, and then, it wasn't the right thing to do. And people left. Commissioners left for those reasons, and they have said it in writing. We have lost an airport manager. The problem is, everyone's leaving, and the reason they're leaving is, they don't agree with what is going on. We need jobs, and at the airport, if we're spending $4 million, and we can put jobs in there, at the air, at the hangar, we need to do that. We need to do a restaurant. I, I asked, "Where's the RFP for the restaurant?" They said, "Oh, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming," and then I gotta think, "Oh, no, we never wrote it." You know, this is ridiculous. You can silence me, but the situation, the reality is, there's nothing in the restaurant, and a hangar was given to people free over the winter time to put their gliders in it. We are losing money there, losing money every single day. We are losing money on an operation that we put $20 million in, in the last 25 years. There's a cell tower that's supposed to be over there. There's a discussion of, was that done right? So every time we do an RFP, we cough the ball up. We should be getting the $50,000 a year from the cell tower. We should get the restaurant, we should get the hangar. We need to do this right. And we're getting people in there, they're, go for two, two meetings, and go, "I'm out." I have people that call me, I'll, I'll give you a name today, Sean Taylor, would love to be on it. He says, "But, you gotta be the right way, through the city council." I'm a businessman, I will stay and I will do it. I can give you some more names, but they won't do it backhanded. I go over to a meeting, and there's two commissioners over there, "Oh, that's okay, that's all right." No, it's not.
Counsel Wilkinson?
It's really nice to say, "Let's do this now, and we'll fix the problem in the future." Okay? Tell me how we're fixing the problem in the future, and I might go along with it. But just saying, "We'll fix it someday." If you're in business, you can't use that attitude. Give me a plan. You don't have a plan. We just need to spend the money now. I'm totally against this, I'm gonna vote no.
Counsel Fitch?
Yes, I'm totally for this, I'm gonna vote yes. We, let's remind ourselves here, this is, this is a nightmare of a situation, this is all over the place. I don't think it needs to be all over the place, this is, per the mayor's point, about two gates, fixing two gates, and just accepting this money to do it. It sounds like we are in compliance at the moment in order to receive these funds. I will gladly put on our next council meeting agenda for July 8th, a request for a presentation from Mass Aeronautics and the city solicitor to make sure that we continue to be in compliance. But if we are in compliance right now, let's accept these funds and repair these gates, 'cause that's really what we're talking about, and, sorry to kick the can down the road, but address these larger issues down the road.
Counsel Blackmore?
Move the question onto the actual order.
Thank you.
Or, I'm sorry, excuse me, should we take the call from, okay. What's another six minutes?
Council Paper number 12,00503, "In Order to Adopt the Aeronautics Division of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Grant in the Amount of $22,700 for the replacement of Gates 1 and 5 Gate Controllers at the Herrmann and West Airport." Do we have a motion?
My motion to accept the adoption of the paperwork, with the understanding that the president of the city council will be signing the document.
I will sign it if this is voted in favor.
Second, but that's the weirdest motion I've heard.
Okay, we have a motion and a, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel Fitch?
Just a reminder, we're voting to repair a couple of gates, we're not voting for anything to do with drumming around the airport, fixing the airport commission, anything else at all.
Yeah, but you're not signing it.
It's a three-year penalty, by the way, just to let you know that. Counsel Oleskowitz?
I'm also gonna support this, I think the airport has long been a, I won't cuss, I can't say it, but it's been a show. It's been terrible. It's been like this for years. We all have our own opinions on it, it's several people over there with clashing personalities, where I think everybody thinks it's their own personal playground, and this is my opinion. But this has to come to an end, 'cause this is, it's an embarrassment to the city, and we're gonna see, this is gonna be going into litigation again, as it was posted in, I believe, media today or yesterday?
I believe, uh, today it was, I believe it was on, in-
Point and order, that's not part of this.
Right, well, okay, all right, so-
I'm giving my opinion as to why I'm supporting this.
Okay.
So you were given plenty of time on the floor to give your opinions uninterrupted, so I gave my opinion, thank you very much.
Let's, let's continue, please. Go ahead, Counsel Oleskowitz.
No, I'm done.
You're done.
I said my thing, I kept it brief.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Bona?
I will support this, but I also will support in the future if an RFP comes in to sell the airport or something.
Okay, any further discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Blackmore?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Yes, he said.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Six years. I'm sorry, President Sapienza, I have to counsel Bard.
Okay, we have Counselor Bard on the line, go ahead and bring him-
Hey, Joel, I'm putting on speaker. So could you tell the city council what your research found, please, regarding the zoning ADU ordinance?
You could put that near the mic more, so maybe-
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yes. Aye, council members. So I did that follow-up research, and I did find the quirk that I thought maybe, may have been added to the, to the zoning act when all of the housing changes were made. And so the particular quirk is that, for the, the kinds of housing changes that we're talking about, and this could specifically ADUs, it is a simple majority, but it's a simple majority of the membership of the council.
Is there any way we can turn that volume up?
I have to show off that case that only looked at the quorum that was present in a particular evening, but in this case, it has to be at least five members of your nine-member council voting in favor.
Total body.
Total body. Okay. All right, so if we have five votes, this will pass. If we have four votes, it will not, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
So are we sat with the city solicitor?
I believe so, unless any of the other counselors have any questions?
Thank you, Attorney Bard.
Thank you, Attorney Bard.
Thank you, Joel.
Let me get back to that paper.
12,471, that was the first one.
12,471, yeah. Yeah, I got it here. Okay, council paper number 12,471, "An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Appendix Z, Zoning Regarding the Addition of Accessory Dwelling Units, ADUs Passed to a Second Reading and Published as Required by Law on May 30, 2025, Postponed at the Meeting of June 10, 2025." We've had a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Still discussion.
Okay, go ahead, discussion, any?
So I, I'm going to support it, 'cause I feel the option is still there down the road, if we wanted to amend it, to change the STR rule. I don't wanna see it get held up where the ADUs can't help happen at all. So, but yeah, the, so, my only dilemma is that STR piece, but I feel the whole ADU was initiated to be affordable housing, uh, ADU, affordable dwelling units, uh, to be affordable, to be affordable, uh, housing. So I, while the state did not specific, specify if they can be STR or not, when you read how this whole thing was brought about, it was to be affordable housing, not to be STRs.
And Counsel Oleskowitz?
I'm gonna support this for the same reasons as Counsel Bona, but I'll also state that this has been in Mass General Law since November or December, I believe, and here we are now, ready to enter July, and we still have no ordinance on the books. And as Counsel Bona did state, if we put something, an ordinance on the books, it's our job to listen to our public, and people voted to put us here, to make amendments to, to this ordinance as time goes on. I mean, right now, the important thing is to get something on, something on the books, 'cause there's, right now, there's nothing at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Blackmore?
For clarification, the state law has passed. The state law exists. We can build ADUs in this city. Right now. I can call and say, I wanna put, call Mr. Maranti and say, "I'm gonna put one in my backyard." I don't know if I meet the requirements. These are things that we wanna do to make it more in line with what we wanna do. To say that we're holding up the ability of people to be, build ADUs is incorrect. I just-
I didn't, I never said-
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
But don't put words in my mouth.
I, excuse me, I didn't put words in your mouth, but it was mentioned by both that we wanna do this to get it moved on. We are, we don't have to do anything to be in compliance, it can be done. And again, you don't interrupt people when they're speaking.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything further to add? Counsel Breen?
I have a question, um, from the president. I got contacted by Airbnb to give a presentation about this, um, um, ADUs. Did, did you get one also?
I did not. I will check, I don't believe I did, but I will check. I don't remember seeing anything in my city email.
Because it, it went to my city email, and it was directly from Airbnb.
Okay. I will check, I don't remember seeing anything.
I received the same thing.
You did receive the same email.
But it was more along the lines of, "I wanna get together with you so we can tell you what we can do for you," something along those lines, rather than, they wanted a presentation. They wanted to give me a presentation.
Okay.
Come to think of it, I may have received it, I have to go back and check in my city email, but I may have received something. It does sound familiar. Any further?
So, so-
Yeah, go ahead.
What's the ramification if this is postponed?
There, I don't believe there is any ramification. Counsel Blackmore?
I would say nothing, that was the point I was trying to make.
Right.
Is that the state law is there, we can build these, the only thing is, are some of the restrictions that we put in regarding parking and some other things, and the STR.
Basically, the stuff that we ordered in, added in.
So if we postpone it, or if we vote it down, and if we vote it down, someone who votes against it can always bring it back with new language. Just putting that out there, too. Other than the fact, we've- too, other than the fact, we've already paid to publish it.
Okay. Counsel Bona?
Uh, one of the ramifications would be a yes, and through the chair, and if Mr. Moranti can answer this, is if someone, uh, right now is allowed to build them as an STR, and if we changed the rule, would they be grandfathered if they did?
They would.
Please step up the mic.
In my opinion, yes, they would.
Okay. Counsel Breen?
Um, I think we need more time and more information. We, we have people from the gallery that are very, very concerned about it, and we have a building inspector that's very concerned about it, and it doesn't seem to be a fire that we need to do it today. I think we need to look at this more carefully.
Counsel Bona?
Uh, through the chair, I guess, Counsel Breen, what more do you want us to do?
Um, I'd like to get more information.
Counsel Wilkinson?
No disrespect, but what's the point? It's a state law. As Counselor Bona said, if we pass this tonight and we need to make changes, that's not relatively hard. Um, postpone, postpone, postpone. If you look at the minutes for the last five years, and I've actually had somebody in my office do this just for fun, most word, the most, the word that's used most in all our minutes is the word postpone. There's absolutely no reason to postpone this. It's just, no reason.
I'll give, I'll give you.
Counsel Breen?
I'll give you a good example. I live in a housing development. There are 66 houses, and the planning board put together a plan in the 60s, and it says, "Single-family houses only, nothing 30 feet from the, uh, can be built to the road. You have to be back set 30 feet." How, how does this work with that? That's in a deed. I mean, does, does this supersede a deed?
State law does.
No, this, not the state law.
State law says you can have STRs, or whatever they're called, in your backyard. That would supersede your deed.
ADUs?
ADUs, that's what I meant. That supersedes your deed.
Mr. Moranti, did you have anything further to add to that?
If you, if you don't mind. So again, I don't think there's any reason to postpone it either. These are the few things that the city, a municipality, any municipality is allowed to do. We could restrict the number of parking spaces. We could restrict the number of units you could have in your yard. We could do the few things that we're intending to do. They don't prevent anybody from building a, an ADU. They would prevent it from being a short-term rental. That's really the biggest, uh, you know, change that we would be making, and it's not really a change, it's an option that we could do to the state law that's already there. But you're right, they could build one today. If they came in and they met all the parameters, they could build one today. The state law already passed. This is just our attempt to get a few things that would fit our plan better than just go ahead and do it.
Thank you. I'm of the opinion that we should not postpone this go-ahead, and then, um, as I believe Counselor Bona mentioned about modifying it if we need to further on.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that. We do that often. We make amendments all the time.
Yeah.
I'd also like to note, um, you know, at the last meeting or the meeting before, I strongly encourage councilors at that time to reach out to the community and get opinions, which, you know, I did, because again, I, there are different opinions out there. Um, I know I'm not, you know, my vote tonight will not agree with all of them, um, and, but that's a lot of the times what we have to do. We have to make a decision. It's not gonna make everyone happy. Um, as Counsel Blackmore did say, it is happening. It can happen already. Um, this is, by passing this tonight just puts in those couple stipulations that make our city a little unique on this than other communities. Um, but as of right now, if ADUs want to be built wherever, now I'm guessing, I don't know your specific, where you are, but if they're private developments, I would, don't know how that affects where things are private versus public. So I would think if it's like a condo unit or some, I, I, you know, I'm just saying, I, that sounds a little different than just the average neighborhood, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmore?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
He is abstaining.
He's abstaining, that's right.
Haleskowitz?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Five VAs?
Motion passes. Okay. That concludes the regular business. Committee reports in minutes. Do we have any committee reports? Counsel Bona?
Uh, I don't have a report. I just want to say on July 1st, uh, General Government will be meeting to discuss the Housing Trust.
Thank you. Okay. And we have no licenses. I will now open this up to open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended, and as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Do we have anybody for open forum? Step up to the mic, name and address for the record.
Brian Josephs, 62 Liberty Street. Um, I'm not super knowledgeable on this subject overall, but I just want to say, in the discussion of the airport this evening, there was a lot of discussion about issuing another RFP for the so-called restaurant space. I believe there were two previous RFPs listed that, I believe, between both of the previous RFPs, I was the only entrepreneur who responded in any way to either. Um, the reason for this is because it is not a restaurant space. To lease a restaurant space, you need to be outfitted with certain permanent onsite fixtures that allow a restaurant to exist. No entrepreneur or investor is going to come in and pay you rent five, 10, 15, even 20 years down the road if they have to put in more than $100,000 on your location. So that is not, you can write a thousand RFPs, and nobody's going to rent that space until the city either puts in somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000 into that space, or re-outfits it to do something other than a restaurant. So, I, I mean, if the city put $150,000 in and put two years free rent on it, I would, I would be interested in talking numbers tomorrow. But even with that being said, I don't think the city should put $150,000 into it. There are better places to spend that money. So in discussing the airport, I think bringing up the restaurant space is kind of silly. And this isn't just my opinion. We organize, there was a meeting there after the last RFP failed, that almost every other local restaurateur was there, including a couple, I believe, from New York, Albany, and Boston, and we all agreed that the number was somewhere around $150,000 that the city would have to put in to turn that into a restaurant. So I just wanted to include that in the discussion.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Name and address for the record.
Hello, Lillian Zabatski, 441 East Main Street. I just want to say, I'm, I'm glad that the ADU ordinance passed tonight. I think part of the discussion around the short-term rental piece, and part of, to Counsel Blackmore's point, that you could buy a house, build a ADU in the back, and turn your house into a short-term rental, points to the fact that the short-term rental discussion is much larger than the ADU discussion. And so this ordinance just prevents people from, uh, outside investors, they might be interested in buying up a house, buying in a building, an ADU, and just using that house as an investment. It, it prevents some of that possibility, but I think the short-term rental discussion is a discussion that we need to have at large. And we, um, put all sorts of restrictions on, uh, people's property. When we zone something for residential, um, we, that, the intention of that is so that it's residential. And so the whole short-term rental discussion, uh, happened because people, Airbnb and all these companies came in and gave people the opportunity to turn something that was residential into something that was commercial. And there's all sorts of challenges that come with that. So anyways, that's a large discussion. I'm glad it passed, but I think, I hope that the City Council, um, looks at the short-term rental discussion, uh, in a more holistic way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Nancy Buller, 30 Johnson Street, North Adams. Um, I'd like to end on a positive note. After a, a successful event this weekend, the Housak River came to City Council to announce this event that happened on Saturday, and I just wanted to let everybody know that it was a, um, amazing event, as very well, um, received by a lot of people and very su- successful. I want to again thank the mayor and the City of North Adams publicly for the support that they showed us throughout this adventure. Mass Moca, um, the City of North Adams, um, Public Services, who made the berms look amazing. Um, I have been told that this was probably one of the most unique, um, 5K, um, routes that people had the pleasure of experiencing. I've also been told that this is the first annual. So, that said, um, we had 68 participants, um, that did, um, work. Also, oh, BAMs, I want to, a shout out to BAMs, who actually wrote a, um, score for the Housak River Run. So I'm very excited about that. Thank you to BAMs. Um, we had participants throughout Berkshire County, but we also had people that came to participate from Sanford, Vermont, Hague, New York, Bridgewater, and Middlefield. And this was an event that I, I thought, wow, if we do something local, it'd be great. Um, so I would encourage people to look out for us for next year, uh, because it's gonna be big. So, thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum?
Uh, Virginia Reel, 36 Holman Street. Uh, first of all, second, what Lillian said about STRs. Second of all, kudos to Nancy for making that event happen. It was spectacular, and I hope we will have more of them. My actual core thing is a question to the mayor. Um, there is a notice, uh, on the Department of Transportation Highway Division about a hearing here on Tuesday, 7/29 at 6:00 PM, about the plan for the overpass. And this seems sort of confusing when we are in the midst of a study of options for the overpass, and this hearing is about one of those options. So I wonder if the mayor might be able to speak to why, make, is there a way to make these, make sense of this? Because it doesn't seem to. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on open forum?
My name is Dawn Mackay. I live at 363 Eagle Street, and I am here tonight to present a petition to the mayor and city council. I only have one copy for the mayor right now, um, from the citizen group Save Notch Forest. And I'm sure you all remember there was a controversy last year over a plan to log in the notch reservoir watershed. We're thankful that Mayor Maxey listened to public opinion. Um, however, we're aware that there's an ongoing tug-of-war over watershed forests, particularly in Massachusetts, and we're concerned that our water supply remains vulnerable to that. So I have three points tonight, and I'm gonna make them extra brief, because there's only two minutes. Our petition is signed by over 350 people, and I ask the mayor and local officials to join us in requesting state assistance through funding and legislative modification so that our cit- date, our city watershed would qualify for a particular program that we've. Sorry, yes.
Outdoor voice, please.
I always try. Um, so, our petition asks for, uh, city to help us, ask state assistance with funding and legislative modifications, so that our city watershed qualifies for this forest reserve program. We've got $5 million last year. Um, and example, I'm gonna skip number two, because I'm afraid I'm running out of time. I have a question. Um, so we are an organized group that wants to help the city with planning. I know that Massachusetts General Law specifically says that Conservation Committees can work with unofficial citizen groups to protect city watersheds, and also, of course, those have to be in accordance with, uh, town or regional master plan. So we're wondering what it would take so that our group could work with the Conservation Commission and/or city planning boards to, with, with our ideas to help the city protect its major, most important resource, which is water. So here we have 360 signatures on the petition.
Thank you.
And we, and I know we're meeting with the mayor on July 8th, so this is an extremely brief preview.
Can I keep this too?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on open forum? Hearing done, let's move on. Mayor, do you have any updates for us?
Sure. Virginia, if I forget, you make sure you yell up to me. Um, so first, the Brown Street Bridge update. We are nearing the point of releasing a bid package for the Brown Street Bridge finally. The anticipated bid opening is scheduled for late August with the goal of beginning construction before the onset of winter. With that, in addition, we have been working diligently with Pam Torg from Bishop and West Realty, who has been retained to list the foreclosed properties on Church Street. Those are 116, 124, and 150 Church Street. These properties will be appearing on the market shortly. Um, before you, on your table, there is a list of board vacancies. If the council has any interested parties, please reach out to me. Counselor Fitch, thank you for sending names along to me. Um, just for the public, we are looking for people in the airport, Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, Historic Commission, Housing Authority, IDAA, Mass Moca, Parks and Rec, Traffic Commission, Tree, Youth Commission, and the Zoning Board. As far as upcoming events, we, our summer concert series at the lake on Wednesdays is underway. Please join us Wednesday at 6:30. This week's performance will be Ian Campbell. And looking ahead, please mark your calendars for our Fourth of July fireworks display on Friday, July 4th at 9:00 PM at the Joe Wolf, Joe Wolf Field Complex. And also mark your calendars, the beach party on Eagle Street will be Saturday, July 19th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. Um, to get to Virginia's question, yes, it is a bit confusing. We are working two pipelines. One, the Veterans Memorial Bridge has been on the tip for many years, and we still want to secure that, I don't want to say funding, but secure that position. So Mass Dot is going ahead with their public hearing to talk about the possibility of doing a repair there. At the same time, we are still doing the feasibility study to repair, replace, or restitch. Um, those conversations are ongoing, and we hope very shortly, by the end of the summer, both of those projects will merge, and we will make a decision on that. So it is a little bit confusing, but we did not want to stop the Mass Dot project, just in case we can't get funding for the second project, the restitch. And with that, we're hoping that we can leverage what we find in our feasibility study to maybe funnel those dollars a little bit differently. So it is a bit confusing, but we're working two pathways. We don't want to bypass any opportunities.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, Counsel Bona?
Through the chair and the mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's right. Um, on the Church Street properties, when they go out, are they listed as one package? Are they gonna be separate?
They're gonna be listed individually.
What's that?
Individually.
Okay, and is it a, a high bid situation, or how that works?
It's just like selling your house.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you get a discount for taking them all?
You can't, unless you.
I run bits two free.
There's state.
It's real estate, you can do anything you want.
Okay, point of order, we have to.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. All right. Liaison updates or any counselor updates? Counsel Fitch?
Yes, tomorrow, there's an event for teens, uh, through the Teens Active in Community Outreach, AKA Taco. Their launch party is in Knoll Field, starting at 4:00 PM. It is, um, meant to be an epic obstacle course, where teens can win prizes and hang out with their friends and build community. So, um, any teens listening, perhaps check that out.
Okay, anybody else? I just want to make a point, uh, the North Adams, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Fitch?
Just, just one other thing. There was a lot of squabbling tonight, and I don't, I'd like for us to not have to do that, and I just wanted to, uh, to commend Counselor Bona and Counselor Sapienza for holding your acts together.
for holding your acts together tonight, because I think you two did it the best, um, you know, managing your emotions. The rest of us, I think, fell a little short tonight.
Thank you. Okay, I have, uh, uh, did you have something, Council Blackmer?
No.
Thought you raised your hand, okay. I just have one thing-
Since you asked.
Well, go right ahead, Council Blackmer?
It would be nice if we would not interrupt and talk over people.
Agreed.
All of us.
Agreed. Okay, I do have one thing. The North Adams Steeple Cats are in the midst of their season, and I encourage anybody that likes baseball, even mildly, to go out and see some great baseball. I've been to a couple of games this year, and you see some great plays. These are, uh, college-age students, they're out there playing for the love of the game, they're not playing for million-dollar, two-million-dollar or plus contracts, and the admission is relatively inexpensive, and the concession stand serves some pretty tasty food. So, I encourage you, anybody, take a nice, one of these warm, nice summer nights, and go out and, uh, enjoy some baseball. Anybody else? Okay, moving on, um, Madam Clerk, do you have any updates? She does not, okay. Correspondents, do we have any correspondents needing to be shared tonight? All right, uh, next thing would be motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.